And every town has a water bed now.
Yeah.
So it's been, you know, definitely slower, but crisp.
Right.
So we're all working on that.
So I have, it is six oh six on July twenty fifth for the meeting of the Dyton Development Industrial Commission. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion. To join Zoom meeting ID is eight five two four one four three six one eight one, passcode seven three two three six eight. Joined by phone, the number is nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. And I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, the Board of Selectmen will now need to also sign in.
Okay.
Ken waiting to the end?
I.
Ken Pacheco, okay.
Great, great. Welcome, Mr. Pacheco.
Uh, this evening, the Dyton Board of Selectmen will be joining our peers with all three members present. This meeting is recorded and the agenda is subject to revisions, additions prior to the meeting to the extent that the law allows. Because this is a hybrid meeting and one of the members of the Board of Selectmen is participating through Zoom, we will have to call the order. Mr. Pacheco?
Present.
Mr. Karen?
Present.
Chairman Hall is present. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Chairman of the Dyton Industrial Development Commission, Dan Haggins.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. So the first order of business is to welcome Darlene Rougeau officially as a new member. She was, have you been sworn in yet by the town clerk?
I didn't know I had to be.
Okay, so yeah, that would be the next step would be to go down there and sign a couple forms or and they can swear you in at this time.
Okay.
But you can vote.
Okay.
So the next item of business is discuss proposal for Route forty four industrial park. Mr. Thibodeau and Mr. Mariano are estimating that they're probably not going to be here until about seven o'clock. So I would like to entertain a motion to take item three C out of order and discuss that.
So move.
Oh, that's three B.
Three B.
Three B is what, yeah, we're going to skip that. So.
Yes, but you said three C.
That's what, yeah, so we're going to take three C out of order.
Oh, okay.
Do it now.
Okay.
So move.
Okay. So I heard a move. Ropelali said second or? Second, second, okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So let me just make a motion. So item three C is to review the draft townwide business needs survey from Serpide. I did send everybody a copy of the online version. We discussed a paper version last time, but they do have it up on the, on our website and it's not turned on. So you can just go there, play with it, enter data, you know, it's not going to be recorded or anything until they make a, set a go live date.
You guys can follow that.
Okay. So I did go through it. There's one, actually two corrections that I've asked them to make. So they're working on those. They're, they're technical. One is the columns are not, you know, in order and the other is the coloring for the next previous buttons are not in order. But all the updates that we have requested at our last meeting have been incorporated. Mike's not going to be here tonight, and I know he's, has a role to play in this too, but we had been talking about when to turn this on and how long to leave it up. And they were suggesting having it online up for like six to eight weeks to allow people to, to take the survey. And they wanted to do it as soon as the first of August. I don't know if anybody has any objections to doing it that soon or concerns about the timing. No. So we're going to be advertising it obviously on, on our, the town social media sites. And Mike is going to put it on the town site. Hey, Tom, how are you? And then Serpide will also have it on their site. They'll actually be hosting it. So the other sites will just point to links to the site where the survey will actually be done. So if it's okay with everybody, I can just work with Serpide and Tom and set an official date for when this is going to go live, aiming for the first week or so of August and just make sure that we're on, you know, in sync in terms of sticking it out there on the website and.
It's going to go just through the month of August?
No, they're suggesting it be for six to eight weeks. So that would be out to the middle to end of September, you know? And they'll be collating the data, getting the results, sending all back to us between now and the end. They can also give us interim updates about, you know, what kind of comments we're getting, sort of thing. But it would really be six to eight weeks. So if everybody's okay with that, I would entertain a motion that myself, in conjunction with Serpide and with Mike Mullen, work together to set a date for go live for the, I'd say the first two weeks of August. Obviously want to do it as soon as possible, but within the first two weeks of August and for a time period of six to eight weeks, depending upon feedback from Serpide.
Are you looking for a motion?
A motion to give me authority to do that with Mike.
So move.
So move, okay.
Easy.
A second?
I guess I can second it. I got it late, but.
That's okay. You heard the motion to just.
Apologize.
That's no problem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Let's see. So I would expect that at our next meeting, we would invite Lizeth Gonzalez, who's the Serpide representative, to join us. And then we can start talking then about what are the next steps because following this is going to be open forums, invite town in. She was planning on at least two of those, is what she was envisioning. To, once we have results of the survey and try to flush out, you know, what are the details, what are people looking for, ask questions, that sort of thing. So, you know, when Lizeth gets here, we can start talking about those kinds of activities. Anybody else?
Now that I'm thinking that, if this was done instead of the second week, and I don't mean to go back, but I just thought of this, we usually have our meetings towards the end of the month.
Right.
We could get it so that we could get some feedback for the next meeting. But if you're doing it in two, if you're going to make that decision in two weeks or the middle of August?
No, I was, I was saying that the thing would be different motion was the goal is to start at the first, the beginning of August.
Okay.
But depending upon timing, no later than the first two weeks, we'll try to get it out there. But the exact date will depend on when Serpide's ready.
I'm just thinking that if we got it out ASAP on the first, you know, first week of August or whatever, by the third week or by the end of the month, we would already have hopefully some feedback that we can discuss.
Yeah.
At that meeting. And that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I would hope so as well. We have good three weeks or so at least of data we pulled in.
But we have to keep in mind that this is like vacation time. People are not going to even look at that.
That's why I asked if we're going until September.
Send it further.
Is there another way besides just the town website to advertise?
Uh, we're going to do it on the town social media sites. Mike had a couple in mind that he thought would be a good place to advertise. Serpide will also be advertising. John Gaggett, who's from the Champaign Chamber of Commerce, who's a member of this committee, I wanted to talk with him. I wasn't quite sure about putting it on their site because it's, we're only, this is for Dyton residents. You know, it's not for the greater Chatham area. So I think that might, you know, draw people in. Although it is possible that, you know, one of the questions are, are you a resident or are you a business owner? And they could say no to both and still take their feedback. I mean, they're a potential business person who'd like to come in and wants to give their feedback. So, so there's a way to do that. But probably what's restricted to the social media and the town website. We did have money in the budget for mailings. So if we're not getting much of a response, we do have the option and the time, I would say, to try to think about mailing things out, but hopefully we don't have to spend money on that. So and if people aren't answering, you know, social media or town site, I don't know that sending them a postcard is going to generate much more, but yeah.
Have we talked about any other options that just in case we don't get any response from this, is there a second?
Um, no. I mean, I mean, mailings are the only backup, phone calls, I mean.
Don't ask me. I'm not going to get my ass to that.
I don't think so. I think this, and we're just hoping, you know, social media is the primary one. And Mike had, you know, said that he did this very recently, asking people's feedback about the town website and how it's organized and what kind of information it contains, how easy it is to use. He got a good response rate.
He did. Well, that's good.
Like he said, he got like fifty respondents within the first six hours.
That's decent.
Yeah. Again, for the same reason, because Mr. Thibodeau and Mr. Mariano could be late, I would take a motion to take item. I guess we're going to have to do this one by one. Just, we'll take a motion to take item three D to discuss Dyton agricultural business needs, to take that out of order. Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion. You take it out of order. Agricultural business needs discussion.
Okay, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So this is, you know, the reason actually that we had asked Darlene, you know, for you to join here. We wanted to start having a standing business item on the agenda about agriculture. I wasn't sure, you know, where we started on that. I mean, it's a lot that we could do. I did send in the email. I had sent out a list of what I know are agriculture or agrotourism, floral, agriculture in the town. I think there were like fifteen or so, including like stables and all that kind of stuff. But I didn't know if you had any ideas about how you'd like us to begin this, knowing this is just like the initial meeting on.
I'm, I'm not really sure because of, I only know of certain parcels in town that are agricultural.
Okay.
I do know parcels that are going to be coming up for sale, but to say that they're going to put a solar farm or, most of them are at their retirement age. Their children are not in the business or have no plans of getting into the business. So what else do they do besides paying taxes on this? Most of them have been flip flopping and renting them out to other farmers, but with the cost of fuel and fertilizers this year, the one on Main Street didn't even get rented.
So I know, you know, that topic of agriculture farming land that people are kind of either retiring or just on the verge of maybe selling is a topic for a lot of committees in towns from different aspects. But just looking at from the business side, like what would be the things that the town could think about and perhaps encourage to help, you know, the next generation to step in and pick it back up again as farming? I mean, are there initiatives at the town, just encouraging the business side economics?
If they're going to take the land for open space, that they could go through the CPC group instead of developing it, they could keep it as, you know, open land. I mean, we did it with a piece of land on Elm Street. The town, you know, they kicked in so much money and the state kicked in the rest, but at least it's never going to be developed.
Conservation as well.
Conservation, right.
They can purchase land as well.
Does the town have a history of land trusts? And I know funding then would be the issue and.
Right.
Perhaps the CPC would be an avenue for at least.
Yes.
Part of that, that would be a big ask for any.
The state will, the state will pay up to eighty percent and the town only has to kick in like twenty, but the state sets the rate on how much the land is worth.
How much the land is worth. And to the seller, what are the, are there any disadvantages to going to land trust route? Obviously it.
I don't think, I mean, if we had developed Elm Street, we would have tripled what they actually paid us for, for the land. It was just that it was a sacred piece of land. It was a perfect.
Right.
Ground. The one on Main Street is the same way. I don't think that the town, the state would not take it for APR and the town could kick in the rest from conservation. And I think it's CPC, right?
Possibly.
Possibly, right.
Well, I know the, speaking on, I can't really speak for CCONC, but they spent two million dollars buying a farm to turn it into a historic and a, so that's, must be doable if it meets the parameters.
Right.
Sorry, I didn't have the money.
Misunderstood. You, you said to turn it into what?
They turned it into a historic, like a, to preserve the farm and the land.
Yes.
And they had, they had a lot of money. They have a lot of money in their CPC.
Yes, I understand.
So they, they, they also turned into a living, working museum.
Okay. I, I thought you, you said they turned it into storage.
Oh, I didn't, I must have mumbled.
Okay, yeah.
No.
That's, that's, that, that wouldn't.
No, not, not at all, but.
It's just getting the people on board to, you know, go through that process. I know it took us a couple of years to get it to go through.
Yeah, but I mean, I think that's.
COVID too.
That's a beautiful thing to do. I, I, I agree with that all, all the way. I mean, look at what the, I think it was the reeds over on.
Yeah, North Walker Street.
North Walker Street. I mean, look at that land is there vacant. I mean, they're still farming it. So from, from that standpoint, it makes all the sense in the world.
Right. There's three different farmers farming that land now. So it's great that it's keeping three different businesses viable.
And they still got top dollar for it at the time even.
I, yeah, I don't know what they got, I'm sure.
I, I, I don't remember. It was, I mean, a lot of people were talking about that. They could not believe on how much money they got, whether it's true or not. I, I don't know. I mean, but it makes.
If it stays open, that's, that's all that.
Exactly, exactly.
Has this topic ever come up among the selectmen about? Like the use of land trusts?
No.
No.
No, hasn't.
Not yet.
But having Darlene on board, the lands that you mentioned, do you know the owners of those properties?
I do.
So could you, would you have time to help coordinate?
I can ask them what.
In that direction.
What their, you know, long-term plans are.
Tom, are you on open space?
I am.
Okay.
Actually, so am I.
Okay.
Kevin Smith, you know, has actually, I guess it's, I mean, can sort of fall into, that's why I said a lot of committees, you know, are interested in this. He has actually started talking about land trust with at least one farmer in town. I don't know who, but I know he's broached the conversation with them. So might also want to talk to Kevin and see who that person was.
Put Darlene, coordinate with open space and share ideas, maybe work together to come up with a plan so we can pursue it and whatever committees need to be notified to make sure we don't miss anyone.
And that was a question I hope, Ken, if you're listening in right now, for the Agricultural Commission. I know you're the liaison there. Are these, is this a topic that they have on their own raised at different times?
I've only been appointed maybe three months and it has not been brought up.
Okay. Are we stepping on their toes by us thinking about this or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But obviously if there's some action being requested, they should be notified.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right now it's just an investigation, I guess.
Correct, yeah. So, okay, yeah, so.
One of the things, if Darlene could help us, is coordinating with the different, you know, agriculture, CPC down the road or open space. Another one that I'm going to mention is Bristol Aki School. They have extension services. It's not like it used to be. They don't have, the different counties have their own. Would you be able to reach out to, to Kevin and see what services the Aggie can offer farmers, but also with town in, in the area of developing a plan of land use? One of the things that's coming more and more clear is that certain sections of Dyton are better suited for certain things. And those areas that are agriculture, if we could coordinate our efforts with individual members on board to spread the wealth around or the, you know, the work around, the effort around, we could just, as there are very few areas and later on, we're going to talk about one with the industrial zone, if you will. If some members can focus on that, whether it be recreation land, open space, agriculture, if the members of the committee could all, almost be like a subcommittee to help focus their efforts in that direction and bring it back to the body, that would be great. The agricultural piece is a big concern. You know, I look at, as I travel through Dyton, like Williams Street, past way down on the, as you're heading down on the right-hand side, there's a huge piece of open land. I always say to myself, what is that going to become someday? Especially with the fact that the moratorium will probably be ending in a year. We need to be ahead of that because once the moratorium is released, then the developments will come and the biggest control is going to be the planning board. So how is that going to be regulated? There are certain things, correct me, Mr. Figueroa, by law that you can't do once the developers stop coming forward.
Once, once they submit a plan, we're done.
Right.
We, we can't say no. I mean, we can't add regulations to anything after the fact.
So now is a good opportunity to get ahead of it before the moratorium is released. If there's open space land, working with CPC, you conservation, snatch that land. Or do we put, and I don't have an answer to this. There are some people who are in favor of solar fields, some people aren't. Do we dedicate more land to recreation? You know, those are things that if there's available land, now's the time to really work on that. Not after the developer now can come in and buy it and throw twenty-five houses.
The, the one thing that I don't know how to go about it, but I know of younger people that are looking to get into farming, but they can't afford to buy the land.
That's one really place where land trusts can come in and help.
Exactly, exactly. If we would, there was a way that we could take over that land and then lease it out to farmers that are willing to, they continue on with the, I mean, he wants to get into, this particular young man that I know of, he wants to get into raising cattle and, you know, things like that. That's, that's his passion. And he goes, I had a farm that I was working with in Rehoboth and then all of a sudden I go to survey it and half of it I couldn't step on. They had some regulations on there and so he let, he dropped it. He said, I, I couldn't continue on with it because half of the land was taken by some, I, I don't even know what he, what he, what he called it, but he started putting posts in to, prior to, because he got the, was allowed to do that. And then all of a sudden somebody, hey, you, you can't, you can't step on here because there was easements on the property that no farming could be done there. And he didn't know that. So, so I told him, I said, you know, in Dyton, you might be able to do something. He goes, no, Dyton is the same thing as Rehoboth. They're going to have restrictions on this, restrictions on that. But if we could come up with something to help these people get a, a start, I think it would be beautiful.
So my understanding of land trusts, and I haven't really researched it in full, but they are a separate legal body once they're created. So it's not like the town owns it and leases it. The town may help fund it, but once created, it's, it's its own legal entity and the funds that they raise go back into the land trust for perhaps more purchases or maintenance or whatever you need to do. Mike, when we brought this up once before, we had said, you know, just like Mike has a business guide, which is really well written on the town website for anybody new coming into town, he doesn't have city, it doesn't have anything for agriculture, something similar, you know? And so I'm sure he's been way too busy to work on it, but, you know, he wanted to put something together that's very similar, but like if you're farming or livestock, this is the process, these are the steps, this is, you know, how we walk you through it and do something similar for that. I had gone to a meeting at Bristol Aggie back in March for new farmers. It was hosted by the Southeastern Mass Agricultural Partnership. Yeah. And they were all young. There were, some of them had places, some of them were looking to start places. And, you know, that's what, that was my first introduction to land trusts for this purpose. But a lot of them also talked about things like town, not Dyton because they weren't from Dyton, but town regulations that just are constant headaches, things like plumbing, you know, insisting on copper piping for livestock as opposed to PVC.
And our ag commission is working on that now. They're putting together.
Okay.
How many chickens per square foot, how many, you know, what animals you can have, what animals you can't have. But they just started it like two weeks ago.
Oh, okay. All right. So, you know, some of these same issues might be things that they're looking at too.
I have a question, Dan. I don't know if.
Okay.
We are a right to farm community. So does that, I don't, I don't really know all the regulations, but does that help us in our position of this type of subject? Does that enhance our, our, we're a right to farm community, so we must, there must be regulations from the state to help. I don't know. I didn't, I think Brett did the work on that. And Mr. Pacheco maybe.
Are you muted?
Right to farm community, Ken?
He's muted.
Yeah, you know.
He's muted.
Yes, we, we are a right to farm, but that doesn't mean you can just do anything. The, as Darlene mentioned, we're working on some recommendations as far as like number of chickens per, you know, per square foot, cattle, sheep and all, all that kind of stuff. But we don't get in, we're not getting into, as far as I know anyway, about copper pipes versus PVC pipes for, for farms. Just because we're a right to farm community doesn't mean you can do anything. I can't, you know, I get chickens, but I can't necessarily put my manure pile next to my, right next to my neighbor's house and they have to smell it all the time. So they are working on it. They, they worked on the chickens poultry so far. They, they worked on the chickens poultry so far, and now they're working on the other regulations. Our last meeting, Stacy Ferry wasn't present, so we needed her guidance on that. Regarding the state, they have very few regulations regarding animals as, as Dayton. You can only have, I think, up to three pigs, but that's the only limitation. And I think the state also deals with horses. But other than that, there is no current regulations, and we don't want to make it that strict that people who like to farm animals specifically, that they can't, they're not able to do it. So we're just coming up right now with recommendations, not bylaws.
I think the more regulations that are put into anything, the worse it could get for, for, for people that are trying to make, you know, to go, make a business go.
You, you could put all kinds of restrictions that, that are not going to help.
Absolutely.
From saying it's going to be a first-time farmer, it's got, they can only make so much profit.
Absolutely.
Those things are a nail in the coffin, as far as I'm concerned.
If a farmer, you know, gets five or six cows, within a year, they have, they, they have calves, and that's 10. Now, if there's a regulation that all they can have was seven or eight, now what is he supposed to do? He, he's obligated to go and, you know, it, it's, we have to kind of take those regulations and work with people. That's, common sense is, is really what it comes down to.
I think some regulations, though, are, you're a backyard farmer, like, it's a residence, and I have chickens, versus I'm a poultry farm. That's, those are two completely different things.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, I think the common sense part has to work, and whoever is regulating these things has to work with people, you know, and if the regulations are there, okay, you have to follow them. But, common sense is a big part of everything that we do in life.
Just a couple of the other things that were raised at that March meeting. And again, these are, but these are not Dayton people, they're just examples of the kinds of issues. Are farm buildings, and inconsistency with building codes and assessors in terms of this farm building versus that farm building, to farms that are just, you know, minimal structure, outbuildings, maybe they have livestock. But it's just like, it's kind of all over the place in terms of how the town treats one building versus another, you know, on a given farm. And, let's see. I think those were the big issues that they gave as examples. And I don't know whether, but, you know, that might be the kind of thing that if we could work with Mike on guides, that we could flesh out some of those that might be happening and, you know, get some consistency in things.
When, when you say buildings, are you just referring to structures that are already there?
No, like new, new outbuilding, new construction.
Because new construction would fall under new guidelines, as opposed to somebody else who's already not grandfathered in, but isn't doing anything with their property that would require an upgrade.
I think there were just, and again, these are just examples of like, I'm putting up two new structures on my barn, they're both outbuildings, they have no heat, they have nothing, it's just shelter. But the town treats them inconsistently in terms of regulations, of what they have to be, you know, what they have to accommodate, and it's like, it's just, and again, these are not Dayton examples, these were people just talking in general about farming and issues that farmers have, so.
Are you talking farming to store things, or just a shelter for animals?
They might be storing grain, they might be storing animals, they might be storing equipment, and.
I don't think that the building laws apply too much for farmers. I, I really.
No, they do.
They do.
You still have to, you put up a new building, you still have to go through building inspector, and, you know, permits and all that stuff.
If, if, if it's going to be a, a, a big, a big thing, but if it's just going to be a shelter and stuff, it still applies?
It still applies, yeah, it's still a building.
Gee, I, I've done a few of those myself.
What happens behind the wood lines, but those don't happen much very much anymore.
Okay.
So unless anybody other has anything else to, else to bring up? I mean, the, we don't have to take a, a motion on it, but, you know, Darlene, if you and I can talk, and maybe look in Kevin Smith.
Yeah.
And I have at least one farmer in town that I've also been talking to, just so we can all coordinate, like, who's talking to who, and who's interested. And in the meantime, maybe we can also, since Kevin's already started this, pick his brains about land trusts, you know, the creation of them, the maintenance of them legally, that sort of thing, and how we might want to proceed, if at all, and.
Okay.
All right. Again, we're a little early for Mr. Tippido and Mr. Mariano, so I'm going to take a, I'd like to entertain a motion to take item 3E out of order, to discuss content guidelines for use by Facebook and LinkedIn pages. Someone wants to make that motion?
Make a motion to take, what'd you say, E?
Yes.
3E to discuss contact guidelines to be used by site administrator for DDIC Facebook and LinkedIn sites.
Second. Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So at the previous meeting, we had, about two meetings back, we'd asked the Board of Selectmen to grant us permission to have a, our own Facebook and LinkedIn site. Last meeting, you know, I was made the administrator of those sites. But I don't want it to be that because I'm the administrator, that means I have free rein to just put up anything I want, you know? And we don't have, we don't meet often enough that I can come back here and run past everybody, everything that I might post either. So I'm not thinking that tonight, we're going to come up with a, a list of guidelines, but I just wanted to put it in there so we can start talking about it. So that as I'm doing that, as things come up, you know, I can, I can run it past that and see whether it makes sense or not. Obviously, I would think, you know, things that apply to DDIC's goals, or any activities like the surveys, the, the business event in September, general comments about doing business in Dayton, like pointing people to the Dayton Business Guide, zoning guidelines, that sort of thing. I was a little stumped, and I was hoping Mike was going to be here, because I think he had a hand in writing this, but obviously, we'd have to adhere to the town's social media policy. And currently, the most social media policy says, and this is just a portion of it, posts on the town's social media accounts shall not be of a personal or political nature, and shall not constitute an endorsement for any business or public figure or other entity. So, let's say somebody, let's say a Roosho's farm is having an event, and we post it. Am I running afoul of this because I'm endorsing your business by posting it? It just seems like, maybe you're just, I'm picking at it a little too much, but I just want to be careful that, given all the different businesses in town, and some of them are competitors, I mean, I don't accidentally like favor one over the other just by reposting or making a comment, or.
Right, you'd be reposting, you wouldn't be endorsing. So, in, in a sense, I, I know it's going to be a fine line where people are going to say, well, because the ad is there.
Correct.
They're supporting it, and, and that's not, that's not true, or it's not necessarily true.
Right.
So you'd have to walk that fine line, but I think you'd have to give equal time to somebody else. If they were going to have an event, you would be, you, you can't not post theirs as well. So I, I think you'd have to decide, we don't do any, or we're going to walk that line and give ample time to somebody else, and, and we're not supporting, we're not endorsing, we're just, it's just an advertising, somewhat similar to what the newspaper does.
True.
They, they don't endorse everything that, that gets advertised. They have their own political opinions, as, well, not political opinions, what?
Editorial.
Editorial, that the paper supports usually, or, or, or doesn't, if, depending upon who's writing it.
Or they'll put a disclaimer.
Sure.
Just say a disclaimer.
Disclaimer.
Right. But I think that would be a great idea, another way of getting something out.
I'm very confident that Mike can help you through this.
Okay, yeah. It also says, the following shall be prohibited, solicitation of commerce. It's just, it's just a sentence, so I don't know what that even means.
Solicitation of commerce?
Commerce.
Commerce.
And again, this is kind of back to endorsing any content that violates a legal ownership interest of any other party. And in my mind, let's say, you know, we have Mr. Tippido and Mr. Mariano coming tonight.
Correct.
They have interest in developing along Route 44. Which would anticipate a zoning change, which would go to town meeting, all that kind of stuff. Would we be amiss to take a position on that zoning change, which could run afoul of somebody else's interests? Perhaps not a business interest, it may be a financial interest in their residence. Are we allowed, are we on thin ice by doing that? I don't know.
What would you be doing, just advertising that?
Well, maybe.
Could that hap, not, it's going to happen.
You would probably want to say, like, we think this is a good idea.
That's why I think you run into trouble.
Yeah.
In Taunton. And Jonathan knows him very well. His name is Dick, Richard Dick Schaefer. He's still on the Taunton development. He was one of the developers of the Taunton Industrial Park. The Development Authority in that town actively recruited General Dynamics. They put together a presentation with many different departments, including the school superintendent. The video that was produced to recruit General Dynamics was produced by Peter Higgins and the TV studio at Taunton High School. And they actively went as far as going out west to their corporate headquarters to encourage them to come to Taunton. And they did, and they have six buildings. And a whole section of Taunton, and two schools came about as a result of it. And one of the more affluent sections of Taunton came about as a result of an industrial park that Taunton actively participated in recruitment of many businesses in there, including, I might add, the Boston Globe. Because one of the things that we have a group in this town, because we don't have much business, they don't have much work, is TIP. And a TIP, TIP is a tax agreement that helps to encourage businesses, it helps to recruit businesses. So, doing that outside of the media, I don't see it as a problem.
Outside of the media, no, I don't see it, but.
The media is more specific, but as far as what we can do as a board, I don't see you in the same situation as Ken, myself, and Peter, because of our responsibilities, legal responsibilities. But I don't see this board any different than the authority that they have in Taun, that Jonathan works with, and Dick Schaefer is a big part of it, and has been for over 25 years. And that's what they do, they, and they recruit businesses. That's what I see as a beautiful thing with the Dayton Industrial Development Commission. So, we need to do that. I mean, we've got a couple businesses right now that really need our help in getting through permitting processes, working with planning, working with zoning. It's scary for them. And having people like all of you sitting here to helping them through that process is a big plus. It helps them overcome the scariness. And in some instances, it saves them legal fees. So, I see a lot of good, and, and there's a big need right now. You know, one of the things the Board of Selectmen are struggling with is the fact that taxes are high in this town. No one disagrees with that. How are we going to deal with all our needs and keep the tax rate down? And we've all sat here, and we've taken a look at how much industrial and commercial land is available in this town. And there isn't a lot. So what we have, we have to maximize. Or else the tax rate's going to keep going up and up and up.
So I will follow up with, I'm, I'm going to be talking to him tomorrow about something else. And I'll mention to him about, you know, some verification about what's the gray area, what's the bright line on social policies for social media postings, and. Okay. So at this time, I would like to take a motion to take item 3G out of order, which is to discuss any new business interests in town.
Did you do the Seneca report?
Um, no, I skipped that. I'm going to be relying on Matt for that, and he's not here tonight.
Okay.
I can, we can go back and talk about that, I have like two, a, a minute and a half of update, but for right now, we'll just talk about 3G, if somebody wants to make that motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second?
To get out of order.
Second, so, any, all in favors?
Aye.
Opposed? So this is just to, it's again, a standing agenda, I have to discuss any new business interests in town. I just have one to note, which is a new fitness training center, it's going to be, the studio is going to be opening at 1050 William Street. I believe they're going by the name E and L Training, I'm not sure if that's the name they're using for business operations or not, but. So there's an existing barn structure there that's going to be renovated and reused. It's a mixed-use zoning. They came before the planning board, there were no issues for zoning because of them. And they work both with adults and children. For children, it's mainly activities around soccer, softball, batting cages, that kind of stuff. So just good luck to them, and hope to see them in business soon.
Have they announced a starting date?
They have not, I think they still have some more hurdles to, before opening. I'm not sure beyond the planning board what they might have to do, who they have to meet with, but I was going to reach out to them and see where they stand, yeah.
You know, help them through the permitting process. When they do have a grand opening, you know, like we did for
Yeah.
One connection.
Absolutely. I don't know if anybody else knows of anything else that's opened the past month?
I don't.
No? All right. So, you can go back to item 3F progress report on Seneca site, if somebody wants to make a motion to take that out of order.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, have it. So, I was hoping Mike was going to care to talk about it, and I don't know if you have more information, Lenny, but this, again, is just a standing agenda item, we just want to try to make some progress on the Seneca site. This started with our discussion about possible use of, I think they're called bluefields. But anyway, it's basically the use of brownfield sites, contaminated sites, for solar farms. It's, can be, depending upon how you construct the solar farm, minimally, minimally intrusive in terms of disrupting the area. So that started the conversation about what's going on with Seneca, because there did seem to be a lot of confusion about where we stand, what's next, what options we have. So Mike did reach out to them, he said he had a couple items on his agenda with them, and he's setting up kind of an informal meeting, is how he described it, just to talk with them, and. But, I don't know, do you have other information, Lenny, about that discussion, or that's a thing to us?
I do. One of the topics that's going to be addressed with Seneca, and I know I've heard the complaints, and so hasn't Mike, is that there are citizen complaints about the upkeep of their properties. Complaints on regarding Main Street area, across from the fire station. And I've heard a number of complaints about Pleasant Street. There have also been some complaints on Elm Street. There have also been some complaints on Elm Street about a fenced-in area. There is a metal fence, and then behind the metal fence is a wooden fence. And the wooden fence is in disrepair. So I, I do know that conservation is going to be involved in some of those discussions to mediate some of the maintenance issues that need to be addressed. I know they have donated land to the town along Main Street, conservation land. It's not brown site, it's not hazardous land. They were kind enough to donate right along the power lines. If you look headed towards Brook Street north, you'll see a whole path right on the power lines. They donated that to the town, which is great conservation land. And right now, there's still a trail through there. So people that hike and jog and walk, it's really nice. And there's a lot of vegetation and animals through there. So that is a plus. So that's going to be finalized, but that's on a good seat. The third part will be the solar farms. So that generates a lot of money for the town. So that is encouraging, but the maintenance work, that's going to be addressed.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the Seneca on Main Street where all those buildings were taken down? Is that?
Right. Right across from the fire station.
There was one time that we were talking about, and I don't know what, I've, I've been in so many different committees that now, we couldn't disturb the existing ground at all. So if it was to be turned into solar farms, there could not be any disturbance on the ground. So in other words, they would probably have to be bringing in concrete slabs on top of the existing to take on all of these structures that the solar panels need.
Lot of towns, I mean, a lot of towns in America are faced with brownfield sites. A lot of them, well, not a lot, many are going this option, and it is commercially feasible, but there are costs associated with it, like either remitting some of the land, like removing the couple feet and doing that, or stone or concrete or something. But also, I talked to Jim Aguirre really quickly, and he said, you know, there's more than one kind of solar farm. There's the kind that use stanchions that you drive into the ground. He said that would be out, but there are others that just rest on the ground. And if they're resting on a solid foundation that is a concrete or it's something that, you know, not going to be disturbed. He said the other part, you have to think about construction vehicles going, maintenance vehicles going in and out of there. So, you know, is there a safe path for them or is there a concrete path for them? He said, but it's definitely doable and much rather, you know, we put the bug in Seneca's ear, it's like, do you really just want to sit on this property forever and do nothing? Or do you want to make some money out of it? Because the town would like to, you know, doesn't have a lot of space.
There's another issue that if, I don't know what contaminants are in that ground. And if, and if something comes to the point, okay, we got a solar farm, and then twenty years, you know, for twenty years, nothing's going to be happening here. But that contaminant that's there continues and spreads or, or it becomes something else. And in twenty years, anybody that walks by there is going to, you know, just, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud as, could we be creating a bigger problem than to force them to clean up, you know? And that's.
When we met with the state in regards to the transfer station, and that is a potential site, there's a lot of scrutiny. Feds will tell us what we can't even, where we can't put it. They're not bashful about that.
We actually, was now that you, you brought that up, there was something that somebody wanted to run a compost business out of that, because most of that is on concrete slabs. So stores and things like that would come in and bring all of their fruits and vegetables and whatever have you, dump it there, and it would be turned into compost. There was a company that wanted to do that, and I, I don't remember anymore about it, but it's, but it, the, the feedback that we got was not good because of heavy trucking going in and out of there. It could disturb the ground, add more contaminants to the ground and, and stuff like that. So it, it, there's just so much to be learned about all of this.
Is there a list of what can be done with that?
Not that I know of.
Business to get, to go in there. And it almost seems like a solar is going to be a stretch, just, Jim told me the same thing about for our transfer station, we could build on top of that for a solar farm. So I'm sure Seneca would fall into the same, well, I shouldn't say I'm sure, I think they would fall into the same guidelines, but nowhere does it exist a list that says.
That I know of.
Do something with this land, you can do A, B, or C, and then, and that's it. Not that anybody's aware of.
I have not heard anything from anyone that, okay, the only thing you can do is this.
Right.
And I, I, I don't know of anything at this point.
I mean, that'd be a great way to proceed, have our choice of, it might not be glamorous, but it might be a choice of three things that says we can finally do something with this site.
Big question, who would be the ones to do that without?
Depends, I guess, what the, the options were.
I wonder if EPA would be, or DEP, I should say.
Both.
Both?
Yes, yes. Especially that, the Seneca property, yes.
Doesn't that, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't that property have to be checked every so often and reported to the DEP?
What it's actually contaminated with.
It does.
And I always kept hearing the biggest thing, just recently, I heard somebody talking about it on somebody's meeting, might have been conservation, that you can't dig there. They're very clear on that, which I know, I know what you're saying, but it just seems like, I'd have to agree, it's going to be touchy, but.
Other than the, other towns in the U.S. have made this work and gotten permission from the, the DEP and their own environmental protection. And it's doable in a general sense, it's doable. In a specific sense, maybe it's not feasible here either, but we don't know. So it's, we just want to start pushing them to see like, you know, is this in any way in anything other than it deserved a piece of property and that.
We just couldn't afford it. When we started talking about the DPW, you know, transfer station, it became a money issue. But EPA, E.
DEP.
DEP, they were more than willing to help us through the.
Really?
Yeah.
Is there money? No money. I mean, it's just there's no money out there. They want to help you, there's no money.
A question, so they still own that property?
Who does? Seneca, yes.
Seneca. Do they pay taxes to the town?
I'm not exactly sure how that works.
All I think about is, okay, so they own that, they created that.
What tax agreement they have with the town, I'm not sure.
They created that, that issue. They're not cleaning it because they can't dig there. And if they do, they're going to create more problems. So what is the land there for? What is?
Their land.
It's their land, but they, if they're not paying taxes.
No, no, I didn't say that. I don't know what tax agreement they have with the town. Are they paying taxes? Yes. How, how much? I don't know.
Okay. Because I don't think it's fair that, you know, they get any kind of a tax break because they contaminated that land, and everybody's got that option to do. You know, why not, you know, instead of me paying taxes for my land, I'll just contaminate it, and then I don't have to pay taxes, you know, just like them, you know? That's my.
Right. Did anybody else have any discussion on this topic? Again, this is just a standing agenda item, we visit this every time, so. The next item I'd like to take out of business is item number four A.
They are on their way, bud.
Oh, they are? Okay, that's right, good. If I have an agenda, I mean, if I, your motion to take item four A out of order?
Yeah, motion to take four A out.
Second?
Of order.
Correct. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? So this is, and John's not here tonight, John Gaggen unfortunately, but planning for the September twenty-first event. So they have started advertising, they actually began advertising with the Firecracker Festival, and they're going to be, they don't have an ad up already on their own page, they're going to be putting it up very shortly. It is open to any Dighton, it's a joint Dighton Berkeley, so it's open to any Dighton or Berkeley business owner, or anybody who's interested in doing business in those towns that may be interested in come and networking. But it is for commercial, it's not for private social political groups. And all the members of the DDIC are actually encouraged to participate. Joe and I have a planning board meeting that night, so technically.
I'm glad you know that.
Yeah. Technically, they could both attend, and they still have a quorum, but it's probably worth something to bring up. Are we, one of us going, both of us going? Are they, make sure they have a quorum so we don't stand them up?
Change the meeting?
That depends on what meetings there is.
Yeah.
Some of those, we both want to be there.
True, that's true too.
Change the meeting date? It's in September, you got a month, a good month, or two months, actually.
Yeah, I can, I talked to Carrie and just tell her, we, ideally, we'd both like to go to this other event, and it's September twenty-first, so.
Sounds like a good event. I said I would like to.
Obviously, the selectmen are definitely encouraged to attend. Tom Ferry, already said he would like to attend. I know that Paul Reynolds would like to come, although at the time I spoke to him, I didn't have the exact date, but he would like to attend as well. But basically, I was going to let Mike know that pretty much anybody in town hall, particularly department heads, that they think, you know, makes sense for them to be there, they're more than welcome to attend, there's no charge. We had talked in the past about Dighton Trails and Parks and Recreation, attending and perhaps setting up a table or something about, you know, what they're doing in town. I don't know if the Agricultural Commission can, would like to attend something like that too. Be up to them.
They may, they're not, they're not meeting now until September.
Okay, so this is September twenty-first. I can shoot an email.
Sure, if you could to the chairman, Kenny Loosow.
Okay. They, as we learned at the last meeting, they are asking for a ten dollars, other than those people I just mentioned that are just blanket invites, ten dollars for businesses. And their justification was, they get, they do so many of these, and people say, yeah, I'm going to be there, it's a catered event, and then they don't show, stop spending all this money. At this point, however, they have raised something like six thousand dollars to cover costs. So I. Hi, welcome.
It's a familiar face. Good, how are you?
We're just finishing up one discussion item, and then we can jump right to you guys. You're welcome to sit up here with us. Up to you.
Please come up.
I've been well, how are yourself? That's good.
So just last week, I talked to John about that ten dollars, and they're already advertising it at least. But what I suggested to him is if the DDIC, basically the town of Dighton, became a sponsor, say we sponsored the first twenty-five people to attend, two hundred and fifty dollars could be our sponsor, would they waive that ten dollar fee? Because a lot of people here thought that, they were kind of against that ten dollar fee asking. So John thought that was not a bad idea, and he ran it past the, the chair for the Taunton Chamber of Commerce, she was fine with it. And basically, they just said like, if you want to become a sponsor, and they didn't put a dollar figure on it, we had been talking about two hundred and fifty, then they would just open it up to any Dighton business, no charge. I did ask Mike if that is an issue from a finance perspective, because I meant to ask the town accountant before she left, if we have the authority to spend money in that specific way, like to sponsor this event. Money isn't professional technical, but is there a problem doing this from a finance perspective? Mike did not think so, but there is an interim accountant that's going to be working with the town, so he's going to run it past that person and just verify that this would not be an issue. And so I just wanted to see what people thought about that idea. I would also say that Mike was generous enough that he covered our Firecracker Festival costs out of some leftover money from town administrative's budget. So we spent like a hundred and thirty-seven dollars between printing and, well, it was all printing, the banner and then the flyers. He covered that for us, so we have not tapped into her thousand dollars for this year. The other thing that thousand dollars had been expected to go for was for mailers to advertise the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce event. Because they've gotten so many sponsors, they're covering that. You don't have that cost to you. So what do people think about us being a sponsor to this, given of say, two hundred and fifty dollars?
That would cover twenty-five people.
They would just like, let up, you say, anybody. He becomes anybody indicted, any business indicted that wants to attend is now good to go.
It's reasonable, what are your concerns?
This, I don't think has completely been advertised yet, but there's going to be a business networking event in September at Bristol Aggie.
Okay.
Hosted by the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce, and it's open to all Dighton and Berkeley businesses or businessmen who are interested in doing business in the town. And it's for people to network, you know, there are going to be people selling goods, suppliers, people talking about joint interests. Some of the other sponsors, like banks and so forth, that have given large donations to this event are going to set up tables, that sort of thing.
That's interesting, that's a good thing, send up to them. Reach out to the local media too.
Yeah, so we're going to, once we start advertising, it's going to be out there, absolutely.
You can even trade, trade spots off, tell me, you can set up a table, if you're doing some ads for us, type thing.
So we just want to know what people think about this committee, town dollars obviously, but.
I think it's a good idea because you're reaching out to your people. You're trying to develop business, and that's what that's.
It's like a relationship, you, you're putting out the welcome mat in the way, like taking care of the.
Yeah.
No?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Now you got to look at what, what numbers are in Taunton's numbers to see how you can make it more affordable looking.
Well, this one is specifically for Dighton Berkeley, this event, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So we still have an August meeting that, well, actually, I should take that back. So not next week, but the week after that, well, next week, the Chamber of Commerce is going to start advertising this. The week after that, John Gaggen and I, planning to start driving around Dighton and knocking on doors. We have a list of like two hundred and sixty businesses in town that, well, just going to hit as many as we can, inviting them. So I'd like to be able to know when we invite them. Is it free, or is it ten dollars? So we can't really wait till August to decide. So I guess if everybody's in agreement, I would be open to a motion that pending approval from the town accountant, interim accountant at the moment, that this is acceptable use of our dollars, that the committee plan to sponsor the Chamber of Commerce Business Networking Event.
As long as I don't have to repeat all of that, I'll make that motion.
For two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All the ayes have it. And I, sorry, hopefully I put it in, yes, I did say put it in there, pending approval from the town, so, okay.
I don't think that's an issue.
I, yeah, Mike didn't think so either, but he did want. I, yeah, Mike didn't think so either, but he did want to double check, so.
Seems like the benefits are going to outweigh the cost.
Absolutely.
It's got a good return on investment there.
So now we come to you gentlemen, why you're here tonight, so I'm just going to turn it over to you and. You can tell us, I know you've talked to some people at least already about this, but yeah, what you're planning, how, what kind of help might be needed and.
Bill's got a piece of property on forty four, on the west, on the north side of it, and he has a gentleman that wants to put a medical marijuana facility in there. I know that new facility opened up, the guy's doing a horrible job of marketing.
Who's, who's?
That medical marijuana facility that's over there, they opened up.
One connection.
Horrible, horrible marketing job.
Really?
Yeah.
I heard you laid off some people.
You see the signs he put up? He's got signs all over the place, you didn't see them. Told you it was a horrible job.
Well, even the Monteverlin.
I'll tell you how bad it was, I stopped to look at one because I was curious what the sign said, so I stopped to read it, and that's horrible. So a sign should be signed, you're driving thirty miles an hour, you should be able to see that, it should be bam, that's what it is, he needs to change the name of that company. He's changing it with some marijuana in it. Cannabis, whatever it may be, so just simple.
Or cannabis leaf.
I mean, look at, look at, I'm telling you, that's got some weird, weird arm on there, I didn't even know it's supposed to be.
So now the gentleman who's looking to set up the marijuana retail site on your property.
That's all.
Appeals from Kane before the planning board already, just as an FYI, because he knows it's not properly sound, but he just wanted to. Planning board?
And this board too, didn't he?
Yes.
Did he? Oh, he did, we, so just as an FYI, because he knows it's not sound properly, but just to explain what he's trying to do and see where you stand on it. But that aside, it sounded like you had bigger ambitions for development?
I don't know, I'm not sure what to do, taxes scare me in this town. I'm thinking of making it into farmland and go buy a farm tractor and get a straw hat. And tear houses down, to be honest with you. It's getting that scary. I just, I can see by thirty thirty the taxes in this town, from the twenty twenty taxes to the thirty thirty, I would get to say it's going to be a fifty percent increase. There's no way you're getting around it. With all the stuff that's coming onto it. You get the BP project coming on, by the time you throw a new town garage on there, the water district, what's going on with those guys, and just the normal percentages that we go up every year. I, I did say fifty percent, that might even be conservative.
So I don't, I know this is just kind of in the beginning stage, it sounded like at least for, for what you might want to do, but. The town, again, it hasn't been super active in the past, but the town does do tax incentive.
The TIF agreement program?
New, and Mike is like re-energizing that?
I could tell you about the TIF agreement.
Well, I know it's history, but Mike is really re-energizing that.
I gave that presentation.
Okay.
I came to town a while back when I wanted to put a building up, had the money, he's sitting in here to do the building. Came down and went from the selectman and explained to what I was doing, come up to that, and one of the guys, we should get a TIF agreement, I was like, okay, I was like, well, let's have us send the paperwork over, I'll do it. Didn't know what TIF agreement was, get a phone call the next day, the gentleman's no longer on the board, I'm not really sure that's, can you look into it for me? So I researched it out, went through master of law, got all the way, had to come down, I was like, come and die, should everybody there, all the departments, police, fire, everybody should be there, ask all the question you can ask. Because there's a lot of deals, the state of mass will give for those TIF agreements, they didn't record it, I don't think they synagorean it.
How long ago was this?
Probably about four, five years ago.
So, and you would know.
Then there was, there was a board, and then the last town administrator, she didn't like me too much, because she called up and she asked me something, I was like, well, look, I can't be there in November, I'm out of town in November, I have business every year. November, I go see my show, it's a week, I go do all my purchases, I'm really busy that week, can't make it. And she's like, well, that's what we have open, I was like, how about December? So we can't do it in December, I was like, okay. And she's like, well, I need plans and bills, like not a problem, and at the time, I own five acres of land on forty four in Roebuck. I was like, well, I'm going to take my plans to town or Roebuck, get a quote on a building for taxes and stuff, and I'll get a, and we'll see what you guys have, we'll see who comes up, she's like, well, that's not very fair. Because she knows Taun, Roebuck's taxes are half the price of Dytons.
So.
It was just the point of it, and I never heard, I never heard back for it, because she thought it was confrontational.
So since Mike's not here, I don't know if, when you're, one of the selectmen would like to speak about TIF then versus what plan is for TIF now.
In, in general. We have spent time looking over. The potential for industrial growth in this town. And because of resources. Highway, water, sewer. There isn't much, or availability of land. Now, one thing that, correct me if I'm wrong, that both of you gentlemen have, is land.
Yep.
Own me as much as seventy five acres. In an area which the city of Taunton has expressed an interest to enter into a partnership. In helping to develop certain sections of Dyton. That. About their land.
Do you think they'd be interested in running TRP down forty four?
Absolutely, I've already had that meeting. Mike Mullin and I. About six months ago. Met with the head of sewer. The mayor's assistant. Head of the DPW. And we talked about partnerships between Dyton and Taunton.
Yeah.
Their sewer facility, their water facility are underutilized. But they're in, one of them is around sixty two percent, the other one's at sixty seven. They need us.
Well, actually, Tom needs them.
They need it because they need to upgrade their facilities, so they need the cash. On the same token, they sold water sewer lines to MCI Bridgewater because they have it available. They're willing to work with us. You all know that Congressman Jake Arshenclage came to Dyton. And spoke to us about federal revenues that may be available. But the one thing that he did say, that he would lead. The push. For the federal government.
Definitely the opera.
Our ways. Beyond that.
It's beyond that one, okay.
Right now, the going rate for sewerage is about one point five million a mile. The connection between. Most of the land that you two have. Is about five miles total, so we're talking about seven point five million to ten million dollars. If Dyton is going to get out of the tax mess that they're in. They're going to need industry. And the Whitford Street area offers the best solution to that problem. And. I hear the reasons why, you know, the problems we've had with development. But I think if people came from the point of view of working together. Because obviously, a development, industrial development benefits both of you, but it benefits the entire town.
Mike said that for years.
You know, you talk about TIF issues and you talk about tax issues. Those can be resolved, matter of people working together, being taken at town meeting. But you have to have a project that is solid, and you have to sell it to the people. Especially the people on Whitford Street. Now, the last time that they talked about a zoning change, my understanding was, was a closed vote.
That, that zoning change they want to do was poorly written. It was thirteen hundred feet back from the west side of, the north side of forty four. That would have put that over Chestnut Street. That was too much of an overlay, that was too outreaching. Should we do more than three hundred feet?
Now, we have some people that are on this committee.
Three hundred feet?
Well, three, if you go three fifty, would you, extra twenty five, three seventy five is usually the limit for your.
I was one that actually asked to extend it because.
To the thirteen hundred, it was a fourteen.
No, I didn't, I don't think I.
It was, it was out there, because I went and I looked at it.
Hmm.
It was freaking, it was out on forty four and Chestnut.
My concern is if you have, if you want to put a business in. And you only have three hundred feet to work with. It's not good enough for a business, depending on the size of business. But if you're going to put a big building in, that's a hundred and fifty or two hundred feet, where's the parking?
Yeah.
Where's the.
Well, that's the.
Landscape, where's all of the things that you need? You don't want to be building these things.
The other thing needs to get adjusted is the offsets, the back on the side offset. That's a fifteen foot on one of those.
No, because you've got to have enough space that a fire, the fire apparatus can, can go around it, you know, it's, it's not a.
Yeah.
That's, you know, we.
You've got to have the width and depth.
You, you have to, you have to think about all these things.
I think if you rode around town and looked at all the businesses that are in town right now, you'd never get those fire trucks around that anyway.
Well, that, that may be true, and you're, you're absolutely right. But the point is, I've never seen two mistakes making, being the right, being good.
We have a height restricted, height restriction on buildings, we have a ladder truck, so you can square up on that.
Yeah, but if you can't get, if you can't put that truck next to the, you know, near the building, I don't care how high the ladder is.
If you get the three sides, you should be good.
What about the other side?
It's never that wide, the size of the lot you're talking about, you can only go up forty percent of the building for the coverage to the lot. I haven't read the zoning laws in a while, I'll have to read it again.
Can I just ask, because I'm not familiar with exactly how your two properties together are laid out, is it. Like a long strip along forty four, or is it a narrow but deep strips?
I got forty four, I got six pieces on forty four, there's just about two thousand feet of frontage between the six of them.
Okay.
On that, I don't know what you have for footage on that one, you have.
I've got six hundred on that one, yeah.
His goes right out to Chestnut, Chestnut Street.
So a lot of this would be, when you say like industrial park, you think like a turn off into an enclosed area, it's kind of like.
I, I, I understand, but some towns have actually worked out a formula. Depending on the parcel, let's, let's say, JCPenney, because they're out of business. They, they want to come in and, and they want to put a ten thousand square foot building up. And again, this is pie in the sky, but. They'd have to have the width with so much depth, but that would have to fit into certain areas. To blanket it in, say, thirteen hundred feet all the way down, I think might be a, a non-doable thing, because you do have. Neighbors behind some of these that are fairly close to forty four, you know, that would owe us that. So maybe, maybe you could make some kind of a formula to where only, you know, certain. Businesses would only go in certain areas if they had so many.
Like an overlay.
Square feet, like an overlay.
But it's also to the size of the building, the number of parking spots you need to have, correct, for square footage?
I mean, all of these things, and, and I want everyone to realize this, that any board can ask to do this and ask to do that. And we go by what's presented to us at that time.
Yes.
And we try to do the best that we can.
We're going to have to work with that.
Yeah, but unfortunately, like you guys, if you had showed up at that time and met with us and said, you know, I don't think that would work. Because of this or because of that, then we could incorporate that into the decision-making, you know, it's, it's, it's very hard to.
Well, the other thing too with that language, and I believe in the planning board did it years back, that if you have a piece of property in its own commercial business in the front. It goes seven hundred feet back, but the zoning laws said three hundred and fifty feet, plus like grace of twenty five feet, I think's in there, now the way they wrote it, you can go all the way to the depth of that lot. The guys over at Linz Propane, they had that situation.
Yep.
And I talked, I talked to the board about changing that, and that got changed years back. And then one day, one of the guys called me up and thanked me because he found out that I was the one that pushed for that, I was like, well, like my lot, it's five hundred feet back on about forty four, and at the time, we had no mixed usage in this town. So I had three hundred and fifty feet plus twenty five, three hundred and seventy five, there's a hundred and twenty five feet back there I could never deal with them with. What are you going to do with it?
Absolutely.
Nothing, so at least now it's usable.
Well, all of one thirty eight was that way, first three hundred feet was agricultural, residential, agricultural, and then behind that was all industrial. It, it's not that way now, it's all mixed use.
Yeah.
Changed that to try.
How you guys changed it to.
Bring in some business.
Revitalize it. A lot of these businesses in this town do a poor job of marketing. They do.
I don't own it, I don't own a business.
I know, but I'm just saying, you've been in my store, I sell custom wheels. I get, I get people from eighty, ninety miles away coming to see us.
Yeah.
Why? Because it's marketing.
Getting, getting back to what you had mentioned earlier. Sewer line, the water line and so forth, up forty four, I think that, that would be a good way of, of bringing in business. If we could settle something as far as the land restrictions on the size, because I think that would be an asset to, to both the town and the business owners.
That also takes on the burden of the water district in this town.
Take the burden, because that whole area there is, I know my grass is brown, so.
But are we thinking, if, if we do something like that, and, and.
Is that five year moratorium on that?
Well, see, a moratorium is usually, what I'm used to, is a little bit different than what people understand them as. Moratoriums on roads, we've, we've dug them up a week later because of one reason or another, but you, when you repair the road, you have to go curb to curb. See, so it matches and you cut and match, so that section is, doesn't look like a patch job. However, a lot of it is going to be in the compaction. And sometimes the material in the trench is suitable for compaction, so you may want to. Exchange that or put an upper layer, an extra upper layer, I know with Dyton, most of Dyton's got a, a two foot gravel layer immediately underneath the paving. And, you know, that, that should be, and if water, water's only down, well, four and a half to five foot cover, but your sewer might be down. I don't know where it is there, it's coming uphill. When it gets over the crest there at forty four lickers, it's going to be going down, so that may require a lift station. Or a force main, or something to push it up so it'll gravity to time. These are the things that, depending on how it's designed, and you can't leave it up to the designers, because they will make a very expensive system. But they all work well, and that's my business, that's what I do, I'm a utility contractor, and we're down sometimes thirty, forty feet. Because of sewer. See, but there's no need for it. We've rearranged a lot of them, and I've been doing it fifty six years.
What type of businesses do you guys like to see on forty four? Do you guys have ideas of what you'd like to see?
One that pays taxes.
What do you think?
Clear enough?
What do you think the neighbors will tolerate for businesses?
I'm, I'm in a real buy, two more pieces of property on forty four, so there might not be many neighbors left to complain.
Or butters, but you still have other neighbors.
Yeah, at the rate, after the Fed raises the next interest rate this week, we'll see what happens.
Up five downwards, you have to dig for the sewer, you think, with that crest on.
Well, I, I, I don't think I would try to do it that way, I would put a lift station in there someplace.
Pumping station somewhere?
Yeah, just to get it up so it'll gravity, the lift station would have to probably go just west of forty four lickers, I think.
Taunton had said they would need a pumping station.
Yeah, well, pumping and lift is too, you know, a lift station, and again, your gravity into your street. And wherever you can't gravity down the road, you're basically just lifting up so gravity's at some point, you know. You know, it's, it's not a huge expense, but it's somewhat of an expense.
It's also true that obviously, businesses tend to cluster, not just in general, but by the nature of the business often. I wonder what Taunton is thinking on, when you talk about like, they would like to. I wonder what Taunton is thinking on, when you talk about like, they would like to develop as well up to their line. And as a partnership, I wonder if they have thoughts about what that means to them.
Pretty close to getting that built out from Water Boulevard to the Dayton Town Line.
They go down as far as, of course.
I know, but they're getting pretty close to getting that built out.
I'm sorry?
They're getting pretty close to getting that all built out now.
They, they actually, um, I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
I'm on my own path. But uh, I'm almost certain that all three lines are on the other side of that little river or brook. So it makes it a little less expensive per mile. And I, how much, how much Dyton on forty-four at that point, is it just a little over?
I, I didn't think we had that much.
Yeah, maybe not even that.
Area, but Dyton's.
It's less than five miles?
I don't think it's five miles.
Yeah, I, I think it's somewhere, I thought, I, I looked at it years ago.
Maybe a mile and a half.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I thought it was somewhere around a mile.
Now, your, your, your land, how far back does it go?
My land?
Mike, yours too, physical.
Well, I.
I own, next to Bill, that, my property that I have, I got one section at nine hundred feet of frontage. And I own land all the way out onto Chestnut Street. It's like the four family house, the little house my mom lives in, my house, that's all connected one big parcel.
And I go all the way to Chestnut Street with the, the full width as well.
Down that.
So it would be less than five miles, would that be even cheap?
With that hill being there. If you were to come down with that, Serge Meen going this way, had a pipe around Chestnut Street, come back down Chestnut to pump it.
Well, that was kind of what I was.
Run downhill from Chestnut. That forces it to go down there.
Further along. Are they, are they, like?
But if it's cheap on the side of the.
Are they encouraging?
Cause now you're just pumping from here.
They said businesses often.
The other thing that was correct is, the water lines on Chestnut Street, a deadhead, this is a deadhead. Now you're getting connected, that tricks another problem they have.
Like manufacturing to.
What happens is, that, that's true. Let's say this.
Not that we wanna.
This says it's forty-four and they held.
Let's say this is here, alright? The, the elevation of this pipe in Taunton.
Cannabis shops going in in Taunton.
Go, so we're gonna go, we're gonna come up.
See, an elevation shot on that.
Yeah.
Action, I, I don't know if the area can support a third.
Half a percent is all we need, go here for gravity, now when we.
Some point I think.
When we start down the other side of the hill, okay?
I would just say that.
That's gonna maybe pick up uh, one or two people there.
Solar power factory.
Where does that, Taunton's town, is that usually?
That'll, that'll.
Almost as much.
Well, you can push, which pushing is a force main.
Okay.
Well, lifting is the effort with gravities, if this, if this gravity's into it, this is where my land is. Other people down here, and then.
So someone's having a uh.
They, they gravity here to attain. Then you just lift it up to the main, so gravity's again.
Okay, so it's number from.
Trying to talk over there.
Yeah.
But you know, that from a town.
If you're, if you're trying to push, now you're maintaining that form in the line all the time, and it becomes a force main. It's not a bad thing.
Or trying to lift is a better. I do.
Yeah, and it allows people to gravity in. If you're gonna make a town for, say, the, 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 the restaurant or the uh, the forty-four lickers wanna gravity into it after the fact, or the people over on the other side, they wanna gravity into that, they wouldn't be able to do it with a force main. They can do it, but it's much more expensive for everybody, see? And you get a connection fee every time somebody goes on that, on that line, see? And that connection fee is.
My concern is that, okay, so we tried to do the sewer line. What return would there be on that to cover the expense of that sewer? Is there, is there views, is there potential return on it?
Yeah, are you gonna increase the revenue stream? One of the things I think, and I think I was referring you, Joe, when you were on one of the boards, is that idea of fifty-five and over with small houses, which that would work out well, cause that takes that whole subject deal out of that program.
Sorry, could you repeat that? I wasn't following.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five and over community, but just a small house on a slab, two bedrooms, like a large kitchen, living room, dining room, all one area with just a bathroom. So where they can have a room for the person that's actually living there, if they need a caretaker, they can be there also. Do a slab with ready, heating the floor, very inexpensive project to build.
Yes.
Cause these fifty-five year old communities, I don't see, I don't see someone spending four hundred thousand dollars.
I uh.
That just sort of makes sense to me.
I've been wanting to push one of those through so bad, it's not even.
One across the street that came in and sold us on the zoning board of appeals, forty B based on fifty-five and older. And then five years later, he was pleading with us to lift that restriction because he was bankrupt. Uh, I mean.
I, I remember watching those meetings, and I really don't understand how some of the coworkers that you had on that board kept their calm when it come every month, that one thing.
I'm not gonna go down that road, but.
I know, but I'm just saying, I'm sitting there doing paperwork at home, listening, I was like, him again?
Yeah.
Cause I'll listen to Channel Nine while I'm doing my paperwork and stuff, like, wow. I couldn't have kept my calm, but I'm pretty calm about things.
So you, you feel that that area would be more suitable for light industry rather than?
Well, it.
He was just trying to throw ideas out there, cause he was asking how the best way of getting revenue back. And my thought with the fifty-five year old community, one, it helps the town get their ten percent, which does away with these forty Bs, which is a nightmare for the town. I'm just trying to think of things that also would be beneficial in a larger spectrum. Because you get a forty B that comes in, and they get a hundred kids coming into the school system real quick. That's ten grand a kid, with, the math's pretty simple on that, not to mention all the social issues they're gonna end up with in town.
There was, there was a point about six years ago where my partner in another business, Dr. Yu, wanted to put an assisted living in, on a seven acres, right there on forty-four. And we had tried to do it in another locale, which didn't work out, and uh, but an assisted living on forty-four, but you need the gas and the sewer, you know what I mean? If you, if you landed a couple of entities, doesn't have to be that, but that is willing to put up a big amount of, of, you know, units or whatever the case might be, may, maybe a maybe an elderly housing project, I, I don't know, but el- anytime you get living quarters, you, you have the, you know, potential for someone adding to the school system, but assisted living wouldn't be. Nursing home or.
My thought was that once you got that in there, now you have potential to say, hey, we could put a strip mall, and you can get a small drugstore in there, more convenience stores in there, you probably get someone might do clothing, even if you had someone had a thrift shop, whether people are bringing their old goods in the summer.
Old trip.
Now you're, you're bringing the ancillary businesses that go along with that.
That would be your anchor, see? One, one big entity like that would be your anchor, and you'd have a lot of things that come off. Oh, that's a huge amount of revenue.
And you've done enough stuff, Joe.
I, I've been in residential business, uh, I've, I've only built homes, and I, you know, it's a small, small little things, you know?
Oh, come on, you're being honest.
Uh, but the uh, the thing is, you know, I, I love, I love this town, and I, I wanna do whatever it takes to make it go.
We also gotta try to keep the integrity of it.
Well, the, it's, it's hard to do both.
I know.
Because.
It's a double-edged.
If we have no income, we can't survive. And the people that live in here cannot take that burden.
But you have two main roads, you got one thirty-six or.
One thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, and we have to work on those two roads to make it attractive to people to bring significant business in there, you know? I don't know what the situation is over on one thirty-eight. I owned the twenty-eight acres there, I just sold it to Eman.
On where?
On Elm Street. On Elm Street, so, but I, I was gonna develop it. That would have been a huge revenue, but, and.
On Elm Street?
Yeah. It was eight hundred and ten feet of frontage.
Cause it went right down to one thirty-eight.
Almost, but the one thirty-eight access was offered to me. Actually, there was two different ways we could have had it, and I owned that outright. It wasn't like I needed someone to help me, you know? But uh.
Why am I not seeing that though, where that is?
Well, right after the waterfall on the opposite side.
I mean, on the left side?
As you can start to go up the hill to Hillcrest.
Wow.
I owned all that on the left.
I didn't even know that that was. What, Eman bought that?
Yeah.
What are they gonna do with it, do you know?
He's gonna, he's gonna put a warehouse, as far as I know. And uh, yeah, well, they, they, he runs a nice clean operation.
He does.
He does.
He does.
And uh.
He's a Dyton guy.
Yep, he's, he's, uh, I think he'd be a credit, and, you know. If it was something anybody didn't like or whatever, I'm sure you could talk to him and, and work it out, but.
He, he hasn't come to any of the boards that I know for anything.
I think it's a pumping station or some type of a surge.
That's a pump station.
So there should be plans on that to get the elevations.
But with the elevation at the pipe, that's on the other side of that stream.
We're back to like three conversations again, so. I just wanted to like loop it back.
And then they just shot all, when they did forty-four over, they just, they elevated, surveyed the whole thing. So District Five should have all those plans for the elevations.
It's, it's a no-brainer though, because it goes upgrade, cause I looked at this for the assisted living that we, we were thinking about. That goes upgrade all the way to forty-four lickers. That's, that's how I know it, by heart, it's upgraded the whole, the whole distance. So that, that would be a gravity at that point, that wouldn't be very expensive to put in.
The town owns a piece of property on forty-four, but on the other side of that, you know where the Putters Way is? Mark Gillie has, and it's had for sale forever. The town of Dyton owns a little wedge lot over there, like a third of the acre or something, odd shape. So, but that might be too far off for that pumping station.
I just wanna ask, just that kind of brainstorming, whether it's for you two or, or anybody, but, so we've talked about zoning. We've talked about, talked about uh, sewer, which would be uh, you know, part on the town. But what are the things that the town can do to either assist? Or at least encourage, like so that you know that uh, you have, you know, to get the backing that you need, whether it's financial from, you know, your, the banks or whoever, however you approach it. Okay, fine, um, but you know, that this is worth your while to proceed because of the town.
I, I look at things a little differently, I don't look at just for myself, I look at other businesses, what they're gonna do. In a TIF agreement, honestly, a business comes in, it's gonna take them a year, and it's gonna take a lawyer, it probably costs them ten grand by the time they're done. Cause they're gonna go from the, go see the selectmen, selectmen are gonna review it, they're gonna send it to another board, then they're gonna take that, send it up to Boston. Then it's gonna come back to the selectmen, it's gonna bounce back and forth, they're gonna go in front of the tax assessors. So you're probably talking six months right there, and you better have a lawyer doing that, because I wouldn't be able to write that paperwork to make sure it's done right.
The thing is, if it takes too long, it's gonna put you in a different climate too, you, you know what I mean, the longer it takes.
Well, that's like, the gentleman that wants to build, develop on what Bill has, he has a window he'd like to get in on, he'd like to start this wall building.
Yeah, and we're kind of restricted, we could never do zoning change until next June at the.
An annual town meeting, as you know.
Yeah, we done on the specials, only at the annual, he's out the window there.
It, it won't be interested in that.
So you have to find something new for that, that portion of that.
Oh, what kind of business was it?
It was retail, a little marijuana.
Oh, that's the gentleman that was.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can't do the planning for it, yeah.
But I mean, there, there are a lot of things, but you, you wanna focus on three utilities. The natural gas, the sewer, and the water. And if you're gonna do the water, with the water's already there, but you may have to increase the line. If you have to increase the line, you may wanna make a loop, you know? And the loop could be going through my property, where I used to own, I'm gonna jump subjects for a second, but I used to own uh, on Chestnut Street where those three new, the last three homes were built, three homes that Gillie built, I owned all that land, that five and a half acres. And that was a big ledge, I don't know if you remember that.
I remember very well.
You know, it went up sixty-some feet, and I, I went to the water board, and I, I said, look, this is a perfect spot to put a tank up there, you know, for pressurizing the water system. And they pretty much threw me out. And I said, oh, so I turned around and I sold it to Gillie, cause he wanted the aggregate.
And he did, he did.
You know.
Yeah, I actually.
He haunted me for it.
I actually went there and got a few trucks of, of stone, to build stone walls on a development that I was doing.
Something came out of there.
Oh.
It was beautiful stone.
I told Gillie, I said, do you, you wanna get rid of this? And well, he goes, you can't afford to get rid of this.
I mean, that, that was perfect, and I, the water tank, we were gonna disguise the water tank, and I was gonna put a house up there. Cause I did the same thing in Lincoln, Rhode Island, I put a seven thousand square foot house on the top of it.
The water tower was there, it would pressurize everything.
That solved a lot of.
Around it.
That solved a lot of the problems they have with that.
You know, being in the business, I, I understand the value of that. No legs, no ugly tower, no nothing, you know? There was a perfect spot there where you could tuck it away and insulate the line and bring it right down around, put it into the water system, you're done. That would have solved all the problems.
But how do we go forward today?
Excuse me?
How do we go forward today?
Getting back to what I was saying, the TIF agreements, you should just shelve it, figure out how to get the commercial tax rate down. That takes one burden right out of there, and that speeds up your process. The next thing when it comes to permitting process, procedures, I brought this to attention of some boards before, I don't know if I did it, the, the planning board, is have it where they have a meeting where the customer comes in, and I wanna put a business on this property. Brings it in, they say to them, okay, you're gonna need all these documents, give them a list, here's what you need. We'll set you up for, how long do you need? Thirty days, sixty days to get it together? Show up that day, and you'll have the building inspector, plumber, lighting, everybody there, the different boards there, the soil boards, everybody has to be there. Gets his little checklist with his engineer, get it done. That way you're not going in front of this board, oh, well, have you been in front of uh, you've been there, you're smiling, you know where I'm going with that? Have you been in front of our conservation? No, now you're gonna go.
Right.
Set up an agenda, now you know the thirty days before you're there. Then you go there like, have you seen this one? Before you know it, you're a year out on the project. That's why you just need to speed up processing too.
Okay.
Just to, cause a lot of these businesses can't afford, some of these guys, they're, they're front, they're not money out of pocket. They're gonna, they're making, and it makes like push ton to get that thing going.
Just so you know, Mike has put together the department heads, board chairman, Deshop, of those groups that are part of the permitting process. And they're meeting on a regular basis to try to expedite it.
Yeah.
It's in its infancy stage now.
I just thought if you had a spreadsheet that say, okay, this is what you're gonna need to say, even if you don't think you need to see him, send a note out to that board, this is my idea.
Miagia has created that, that has been created.
That way that just speeds up that process to keep moving ahead. Cause not in this town, but I've heard guys that are building projects in other towns, it turns into an absolute nightmare.
One of the problems that's still, they're trying to work through is the board meetings. And that, the, that's actually the political process, if you will.
They all gotta play nice.
That can be difficult.
I know, there's a lot of personalities to, to save room.
Yes.
I'll tell you, to, to, to have any project, to go in and, and be done in less than two, three months, you get a better chance of having the people come over.
Some of these towns, eight and nine months a year.
It took me three years to get a development to pass in Attlebar.
For a, a commercial type business?
No, for a residential street, five hundred and sixty feet deep. Three years.
Yeah.
Thousands and thousands of dollars.
I, I, I agree, but I was, I was just telling him that in South Carolina, we had a project for a hundred and forty-four homes. And everything was done and ready within, under, under eight months. But when we went in to meet with them, they got everybody in all the departments, like you were saying, together. And they basically said, "Look, this is what we need." And some of them had, you know, sheets or multi-sheets, you gotta do this, gotta do that, meet these requirements. Meet the requirements, you get your permits.
So I.
Even the Army Corps was.
I'm just trying to figure out how to streamline it for businesses to get, make it easy.
Well, we're also thinking about you personally, not just in general, I mean, and they overlap, I got it. But I think Peter's question was like, your particular project, I mean, what, what's next for it that we can help with?
Next, I'm not gonna do anything right now.
No, I know that.
I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait till the economy crashes.
Well.
Always trying to take the poor guy down.
Well, no, it's, it's inevitable, it's gonna happen.
I mean, but it sounds.
It's gonna happen sort of than you think, probably.
But just that it's, and it's real simple from what I've heard, it's zoning and infrastructure. And yeah, there are things like permitting and the, and how, that long that takes that we can, it built, but it's really zoning and infrastructure, the things the town has to help you with to get this off the ground, is that a true statement?
It is, and the tax rate. The tax rate's probably the top one on that list, because it's such a variable. Right now, if you look at your taxes and the cost of ten years, figure thirty percent increase. Which is scary.
Yeah, but so is the cost of business, it's, you know, you're gonna charge more, you don't charge the same thing for.
You can't push stuff, you can't push stuff so far before it doesn't work anymore.
It's the same thing with everything. You know, I, I, it's the cost of business, you know?
I got, I deal with companies that are based out of California. I got one company that just moved to Ohio. They're now paying to have their containers put on a rail, shipped to Ohio, unload out of there and dispersed around the US. Why?
Cause of tax.
Cost. Cost of business. A good example, I screwed up when that know-how trailer was for sale, I should've went and bought that. Cause I would be cheaper to do business in Tonon than in Dayton. Why? Because the reason I asked TRP, which I didn't realize you had that conversation, that's right there, that's a third to fifty percent off right there. You have the gas, which Bill alluded to, you have the surge, the town water right there. It's not that it's any difference, we're talking about a mile down the road from our map, three quarters of a mile. But just like when you go to Rehoboth, the tax rate for Rehoboth, businesses fifty percent less than Dayton. They don't have a split rate.
Natural gas, does it come down forty-four to Seggie?
It's right to Dayton.
Is it right?
Right to the Dayton?
I'm pretty sure it's right to the line, I think it's, I'm almost certain it's on the other side of that little bridge. If it isn't, it's just on the opposite side, but I'm almost certain all three utilities are on the other side. In other words, our side.
Right. Are you, are you also, do you have experience as a developer?
Yeah. I'm on a project right now at, in Sharon, Mass. Project, and we've been there a long time, but we, we've done Westwood, we've done Canton. Developer and.
So you, you know how to take it from start to finish?
Sure.
What can we do if you wanted to go down that road to help you, the town?
I'd have to really give that some consideration.
Would you say zoning would be the first thing? Zoning change would probably be the first thing.
It would be the first thing, yeah.
So it depends on what business you're going in there.
I'm sorry?
Right now, the way it's done, most businesses will get in there, you just have some of these, like that John wants to develop that piece there, he has for that medical marijuana, that's a specialized thing.
Problem we have here is that there's no spot zoning. And it can be a continuous area.
See, you'd have to word us on the language, like from the Rehoboth Town Line to the Tonon Town Line, on an all big side of forty-four, three hundred feet back. Limit the number of things that could go in, so you couldn't have like a hundred dispensaries going on that side of forty-four. From a limit, a number on there, language like that.
Yeah, but.
Otherwise, you'd be losing the wall.
If Mr. Jones doesn't wanna rezone his property.
Take multiple properties.
It, it creates a problem for you, it creates a problem for everybody. But the state will not allow us to spot zone.
Yeah, but if you did just the one side of forty-four.
Lot.
You're covering the length of forty-four. North side or south side.
I don't think that we can force anybody to, 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 any property owners to change.
Is the north side of forty-four commercial right now, the whole thing?
No. But I don't think it is.
It's all zone business.
I think it's all zone business.
Yeah, this.
There's an industrial part, right?
So this is forty-four, this red with the blue there, so.
This is forty-four, yes.
I'm pretty.
The one side, yes.
I'm pretty certain it's all business.
Right there, my eyesight.
Yeah, I don't want my glasses either. Oh, isn't all that red business?
The red is the.
I can't.
Red is business.
I can't see close enough to see whether that's one side or it's cutting down the middle of it, but.
That's going right, it's both sides of forty-four.
It actually has a jog in it. See the jog right there?
What is? No, that jog? That's over by, uh.
Oh, is that what it is?
That's why I brought that five and a half acres from the town, cause I was on industrial.
Okay. Well. It's already commercial.
All right, it's not industrial, it is commercial, and that might be an added incentive if it was industrial, so.
What, what moment would you get in for an industrial?
Like manufacturing?
Um, I think.
Could you make, like manufacturing in a business zone?
No, it jumps it up.
Like, I think.
I don't know how to answer that.
I think it jumps it.
I think it would scare people away because of the, you know what I mean, because if it was industrial. I think the commercial aspect of it, and Tonon, that's all, Tonon is all commercial up and down, right, on forty-four? You can see the homes that are there, they're being sold to people that are building commercial buildings, you know, and so forth. And eventually, that'll all, both sides of the road will be all commercial buildings, you know, as, as opposed to homes. And that's usually what happens.
That's what happened right here.
For sure. They put.
The word industrial's gonna scare everybody.
Okay.
What's that? The word industrial will scare all the neighbors.
I think so.
That's, that's.
Because you'll, even though most industrial wanna work two or three shifts. And that kinda.
Puts them.
Even if it's only cars and lights and stuff, I think it would put a damper on things. That's my opinion.
So you're recommending commercial?
Well, a warehouse fall under just regular business.
Don't know.
You would recommend commercial rather than industrial?
I would, yeah.
And what is that zone now?
Well, it, it's showing here that it's, um, commercial. But.
It's hard to tell in the math far felt bad.
How far.
You don't have the utilities, the whole, the whole thing is commercial, I think all of it is commercial. What, what, what I think's lacking is the utilities.
Utilities, that's right.
Would the, uh, warehousing be under industrial or is that still going to business?
Going to business.
It go into business.
Business in business, part of commercial?
Yes, but not industrial.
Not industrial.
Industrial, that actually don't think.
But I don't know who would wanna manufacture, I mean, that's kind of a, you know.
Dying breed.
Less expensive, prossial land someplace to.
Right.
You know what I mean?
You don't need forty-four for that.
No. You might need access to forty-four nearby, within a mile.
Right.
You know, a half mile.
Retail development would make the most sense on that.
Which one?
Retail, retail stores. Or the other thing is to have, builders with Brad, just a guy's got like a small company, like these guys have lawn mowers, they're out mowing and stuff for the.
Small businesses, yeah.
I present it's something like that with that piece behind Bristol County Auto Auto Works.
I built some of those in Smithfield, Rhode Island.
But then the.
Small ones. You get, uh, small business condos, and people bought the condos and, you know, it's got a, a one-bay garage. I, I know this, this woman who has a business there. She has a supply house. And she retails stuff out of, you know, the, the stuff comes in the garage door, and she has two offices, one behind the other, and sells flags and, you know, construction equipment, cones and things like that. But, uh, and I don't know what the other businesses are, but there, there gotta be something, you know, similar, I guess.
So would it make sense at some point, soon, probably, but obviously way before next year's town meeting, that the two of them come before the planning board? With, here is their parcels that they're envisioning are involved, and then we can actually, the planning board can lay it up against like where the commercial zoning ends, or some of their parcels outside of it. You know, that they can't properly make use of, would there be a need for an amendment to zoning to be taken to the town meeting next year? If the zoning, if the planning board wants to, you know, is in agreement with, you know, the intent.
Yeah, I mean, all of those things that you, you know, that's the only way to do it, is to come before the board that, to do that, and everybody would have to vote, and then put it out to advertising.
Are you gentlemen interested in that? Or is it something you just wanna sit on for a while?
No, I'd like to do something with them, seventy-three years old. I can't sit on it.
He hasn't done much, because he don't look that old.
I was running a bulldozer up until, uh, I had to take a shower to come here. So. I, I'll, between the sweat and the dirt and the dust.
Yeah.
You say, "You better go out back there under the hose."
Yeah, but if you stop doing it.
Get a consensus from this.
I'll be fishing on the pole.
Section is industrial in the town.
I try to do both.
Would you say that, would you say that the Winthrop Street area would be the one that we should focus on first?
You just said industrial.
Or no, commercial?
Commercial, okay.
Based on the things that I've heard this evening, it would be safer and more practical to try to work within the zoning that exists there now, which is commercial, correct?
But, but we don't know from this little one.
See, we're, we're looking at this here. See, look at, this is.
That family's inside, that's the commercial.
But.
Is it cutting off?
Marijuana overlay district. This is what you want.
Well, that's what I wanted, but you can't do it.
Come to the planning board.
Nobody says you can't do it.
What are the property lines?
Zone it.
And we can lay it up and say like.
In the time zone.
You're completely in commercial or.
I was.
Half in commercial, but half of it is falling back into something else, and you probably not be able to use it.
So I mean, the only area that we have for us.
Now, based on what I've heard this evening. Utilities is being. At a short piece. And from the board of selectmen's point of view. Would it be appropriate to reach out to congressmen to take a look at the Winthrop Street area?
We'd absolutely say this.
Knowing.
Somerset, and actually, there is another one that's on.
Would help.
William Street.
They won't need to partner with us.
Right.
We just need the money.
Can't hurt.
If we assume that's about two miles on that, that one point five million per mile, is that the water and surge or just the surge side of it?
This is.
Just the sewer.
Why do it be cheaper?
And then you got gas too, I don't know what that runs.
Totally different.
Sorry?
The gas line run that down there too, if you're gonna do your money.
I don't know what, yeah, this, that was new to me.
This will teach you.
I have to look into the cost for that.
I think. Because a good point that Ian brought up was the return on investment. Is there gonna be enough?
I don't know what.
Properties developed out to return money over the next twenty years. But I don't know how you'd space that out over the amount of money you spend on a project like that. Well, to figure that, is it gonna bring enough revenue back?
Well, I think the state revenue would be different than what it's gonna cost the town. The town would have to look at it as what kind of investment are we gonna make and get on our return? But the state is not, the state's not gonna say, here's just ten million dollars. Or the feds. But, um, they'd have different requirements.
No, no, there isn't.
They made us have stipulations on type of businesses too.
I don't know how much say they would, they'd say in what is zoned, um, that we'd just have to justify the expense to them.
Forty-four there. Interesting.
But it have, it would have to benefit enough.
Up Chestnut.
To do it, not just throw money at it.
Good idea to connect those two. And we probably could do something through my property.
And money.
To connect.
Make that step to talk to.
That'll help.
Of course.
Okay.
That would be, what would be the.
Right.
Okay.
Is it this committee, is it the selectmen, is it?
Reaching out to the.
Reaching out to Archon Claus.
Congress.
Oh, no, we've already, I mean.
You've already made those steps, huh?
Yes, yeah, so we would continue, and I spoke to Mike about that today, so he said we would pursue that further if. The consensus was to do that.
Yes, and obviously. I, not make a motion, but I think.
Absolutely.
The people here tonight have said that that is the consensus.
I also think that his money isn't specific to sewer. We talked about sewer, our focus of the meeting with him, with Brad, was sewage. However. The funding from the feds is roads. Utilities, so water.
Yeah. Broadband.
And broadband too, but in this particular instance, we were, see, our focus was on, when he came, one thirty-eight and Pleasant Street. And it ties with Somerset. The project for Somerset at one thirty-eight is twenty-two million dollars. The odds of Dayton getting twenty-two million dollars from feds.
Well.
Too small.
And also the return on it.
There was less of a return on one thirty-eight.
Right.
And more of the residents were against it.
Commercial.
And for it.
Pleasant Street is totally.
Because there's no return for it.
No.
That's the whole thing, right?
That'd be a better option.
Throwing money down the toilet and.
Cause.
Not getting it back.
That's why I was focusing on, on forty-four, cause I saw some potential there.
If we can rezone it, or zoner accordingly.
The discussion we had already, there's one that's out on that.
Now, that is a ZBA thing or is that a planning board thing?
Planning board.
Okay.
So I just wanna make people feel that at the time, it's a quarter after eight. I imagine that they're gonna be more future discussions with these gentlemen down the road, coming back to us, to the planning board, to. Men's office.
I'm gonna pursue it with Archon Claus. First, I don't know if he wants to work with planning.
I can, are you guys okay with by asking Carrie Easterday to reach out to you to put up a date? Doesn't have to be immediate, but like in the next few months to come before the planning.
It's not a problem.
And say like, here's, here's a map of our property, here's, you know, what we're thinking about.
I can get those prints, that's not an issue.
Do you have a prints already of these properties?
I have.
Oh, of the property, probably Leo.
I have the ones from the town.
You have that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and you do?
Not, not a, for a business layout.
No, I, I understand.
I have some that I've had engineered already, and a couple of my properties, and I have others that the town provided off the town website.
Any, anything that you have that Carrie can look at, and believe me, she's, she's very good at what she's doing, and I, uh. She can actually look at that. You know, bring it to our, our attention, and we all work together on it, and maybe invite you guys to come in and talk about.
We were just discussing whether it'd be wiser to keep just the town water, keep it on septic rather than surge, and just get the tax rate down. Because I couldn't really think about that. Because I couldn't really think about that, at three, four million dollars, that's a lot of money to put out for infrastructure, to try to get that revenue back over X amount of years.
Which a lot of us bounce some numbers back and forth and see.
I have to get the actual, I have to get those grades.
What's that?
I have to get those grades for you, the elevations. Figure that out on the surge side.
I, I know what that is already.
Well, I mean.
I could tell you that just went hot.
For water, we know Tonon is like very anxious to sell their water, so.
Dayton already has a water line there.
They already have that water line.
It's just a matter, matter of how, how big is the line, you know what I mean?
Gotcha, okay.
They ran the line up Chestnut Street, which that's a fairly new line, and I know people past me.
Yeah, I had to resolve a big conflict.
Not, we could probably do something to cut through my property, uh, because I was considering a small road on Chestnut and maybe something on forty-four, so you run a, a loop.
Yeah.
Loops are always better than dead ends.
Absolutely.
You know, and that's, that's what you have there is dead ends.
Cross side, that I mean, but small too.
But as Lenny said, he's also gonna be reaching out to us for state and federal dollars if possible, for infrastructure in general.
Right.
That includes water, so.
I just try to think overall, what's the best for the whole, for the whole town, because there's obviously other business areas that could get developed. Come on, one thing that covers everything, makes everyone's life a lot easier, taking, oh, let's do this street this year, now next year, let's go work on this street, we just get something that covers everything, one shot.
So I was just saying, I imagine, like, you know, within the coming months, a couple times more this year, we might, you know, ask you, ticket, you get with the planning board, Lenny has updates with, you know, the town of Tonon or the state and federal, you know, we might ask you to come back and we can.
I think the natural gas.
Again and again, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I, I think anything that we can bring up there between water, sewer and all, anything will be a plus.
Right. What we were saying was, we're trying to figure out how many customers are you actually gonna have to go into this to be able to justify spending that money, and that's, that's what we're gonna try to.
You're a lot of it, turning investment.
I mean, if you got too many dead spots, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Just because there's woods there, doesn't mean to say it's a dead spot, but, but there gonna be some dead.
That cross from you, that's wetlands, that's not.
So you would not, I mean, you would develop it yourselves, you wouldn't sell it outright?
The property. Probably develop myself.
Okay.
I develop.
Absolutely.
Keep a rental property.
Yeah.
That's my retirement fund.
Sure.
Another one.
Anytime you wanna see what I'm doing.
I learned it all from you.
I'll show you the project in Sharon.
Where, whereabouts is it?
Used to be exit seven, I think it's seventeen now, exit seven, you get the cranberry bogs?
Yep.
Took, took a lot of the cranberry bogs out, replicated them, put in old post road from the shores, we got a Costco going way up in the corner.
Oh, wow.
Got a possible market basket, which is kinda back and forth immediately on, on the left, there's three hundred and fifty units or two hundred and fifty, I lose track all the time with numbers, on the right side already. And, uh, you know, so we're, we're talking now, the town, we're gonna deed the cranberry bogs over to the town, but they wanna up, you know, make them cranberry bogs, but they wanna upgrade them.
Not just replicate them.
Thousand dollars additional to upgrade them, so we're trying to talk them into walking trails and stuff like that, because you have, have a lot of in there, and there's two, two buildings with parking garages underneath, and I could, show you the plans where I can pick you out, show you what's going on there.
I'm up there just about every day.
Are you really?
Yeah.
I'll be there tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Go right to the end.
Yep.
You know, do you have my phone number?
No, I, I, actually, I don't think I do.
I'll, I'll write it down.
Unless anybody else has something about this topic that they.
Sorry.
And, you know, but I'm, I'm sure you'll be back again, we'll be talking about it some more.
But some interesting ideas.
Yeah, so, um, appreciate your coming in, thank you, yeah.
A pleasure, thank you for.
Yeah, welcome to stay, we're just about to wrap up all these formalities, but.
Phil, I am gonna pursue. I am going to pursue talking to Ashen Clash, uh, and with Tonon, just to firm it up. Are you still going to meet with the planning board?
I'm gonna have Carrie reach out to him.
Great.
And set up something.
You're talking about for the facility that I was gonna.
Well, Winthrop Street area in general.
Well, we can meet with them, but the facility that, the people that wanted to be able to retail on forty-four are not gonna be interested if I can't provide them with something by the fall.
By the fall.
I, I don't see how that's gonna be because that's gonna require town, the town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I understand.
The fall's a special meeting, so I wouldn't be able to do that, but is that, um, I think the little houses is a great idea for the fifty-five year old community. Slab house.
Peter, I'm just gonna move on to, you can continue to talk to him just fast.
No, I, I.
Um, the next item I have is correspondence, which there is none.
But not so much.
Public input.
Thank you so much.
Input.
I did pass out the meeting minutes.
Even this town because.
June, and, and the December.
Pay the taxes on there.
December's meeting minutes have gone missing.
Get us a little bit smaller.
We have very hard.
We have very basic, we have some basic notes, and I've written them up.
All the town boards.
Okay, so I distributed the, um, the June ones earlier, just wanna look at the, um, December ones.
I, I have ways of.
Somebody wants to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I can't make a present. I had my engineer draw.
Do I have a second?
Plan of what was gonna go, and then all of a sudden, there was one.
Can I just get you the second?
Oh, I'll second, sure, no problem.
So I have first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
It wasn't a aye.
Nay.
All of a sudden.
If those are approved, tonight's, um, rock. And, and Joe, because.
Estimate, I don't remember what I worked on that day. That's a lot of money, no way we can ever afford to do that.
Our next meeting is gonna be, we stick with the fourth Monday, August twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
August twenty-second at.
And?
Sorry, six P M.
Six P M.
Do I have a motion for, to set the next meeting for August twenty-second?
Make a motion, August twenty-second?
Yeah, second.
Six P M.
A second.
He has some size.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, this was gonna go from forest up three mile.
Motion passes?
To.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm not, and a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn. Second, oh, sorry.
Oh, do I have to make a motion with Carrie, or do I just go down there until the people is ready?
This would be a small.
Oh, it's the town clerk.
Town clerk.